Good evening, and welcome to the Planning Commission. The date is Monday, November 23rd, 2015. Will everyone please rise for Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, may be seated. First item of tonight's agenda is the approval of the agenda. Does anybody have any changes they'd like to make? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve the agenda. Second?
Motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Second item on the agenda is approval for the minutes for the November 9th, 2015 meeting. Does anybody have any changes they'd like to make? Not seeing any? So entertain a motion.
Move to approve the following Planning Commission minutes for the meeting held Monday, November 9th, 2015.
Second?
Motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Very good. We have no public hearings for tonight. The only two items we have on the agenda is a plan as report. One is for a code amendment related to architectural and constructional materials, and the second is a 2016 work plan, both provided by Julie. Julie, you want to take us through those, please?
Sure. As you recall, the Planning Commission and City Council have had discussions over the course of the past several months about design standards and several specific topics within the design standards area. And one of those is exterior materials. So as a part of continuing work on those initiatives, staff has brought forward some discussion topics with regard to exterior materials that we would like to get some further consensus or thoughts before coming back to you with some more formal language for you to review and comment on. So as you'll recall, in the commercial districts, the commercial, the office, town center, TOD, should it be adopted, in public zoning districts, the code requires a 75%, 25% split between exterior materials. And there are seven materials that fall within that 75% category. And then there are a handful of other 25% materials that are identified. The industrial districts, it's the same type of setup. However, they have a broader, those districts have a broader list and include up to nine different materials that could be classified within the 75% category. So at the work session that staff prepared and presented some information to the City Council, there was discussion about amending the language to possibly add other materials that are maybe up and coming, or new materials that are, have hit the marketplace since the code was established initially, as well as providing a little more detail as to what the expectations are for those, excuse me, for those materials. Specifically, what staff was suggesting in that discussion was that in the commercial districts, that at least three different materials be provided, and that they have at least one color variation. And in the industrial districts, the same type of theory, but only two different materials be provided with one, one color variation. In addition, there was some discussion about possibly identifying some of those materials in the 25% category, specifically plastic and vinyl, and maybe not allowing those materials up to the full 25%, but allowing them at some lesser extent, or specifying that they be used for trim purposes only, in order to limit the use of those. And as a part of that discussion, council seemed generally supportive of continuing those discussions, though they did note that within that 75% category, there may be some preferred materials that, there might be a way for staff to craft language to incentivize use of preferred materials within that category. So at this point, we'd like to get some more feedback from you, as I said before, coming back with some specific language for your review and comment. And there are several discussion topics that were identified in the staff report. Specifically, we're looking for some feedback about any other materials that the commission feels may be appropriate to include within either the 75 or 25% category. Discussion about whether revising the 25% language to be a bit more open-ended. Right now, as you'll see, there are four items that are listed as permissive materials within the 25% category. As you know from doing plan reviews, there are other materials that have fallen within that 25% category, as projects have moved through the process, and that has been acceptable to the city in the past. So whether or not we want to be quite as prescriptive in that 25% category. Also, some discussion about whether or not we want to require the pedestrian levels of a structure to be comprised of materials that fall within that 75% category. We spoke to that on some of the previous site plan reviews that you have done recently in talking about requiring a more solid material on that pedestrian level, especially in areas where you might get deliveries, or bikes, or, you know, just that pedestrian traffic that may, may be right at that, at that level. And then also some additional discussion about possibly drafting language that talks about use of only two materials if you're using some of the preferred materials within the commercial districts. So for instance, if you're using glass and brick, you wouldn't have to introduce that third material, whether or not that's something that the commission would be interested in. And then what are the appropriate facades to apply those exterior material requirements to? For instance, do we want to include those on all facades, or only those that are visible from public roadways? What about visible from public open spaces? For instance, one of the, one of the structures that comes to mind are those structures that front along Singletary, and right now their backs, like Brunswick and other buildings, really aren't visible to anything because of the grade that's back there. But however, if the LRT line comes in, now that's going to be just as visible, if not more visible, than their current front door is. So wanting to have that discussion about, should we be requiring these improvements on all facades, because things change over time, and what's now your back door could be your front door in the future. So staff is looking for you to have some, just open discussion about these. I'm happy to answer any questions along the way that you may have. I'm looking for your thoughts, concerns, consensus, if you're able to provide that. If you're not, the conversation itself will be helpful in, in staff formulating some specific language to bring back.
Okay, thank you. So why don't we just tackle this kind of one at a time? Does everyone have these in front of them, either electronically or by hard copy? So number one, it talks about other materials that might be appropriate to include within the 75% category. Are there any comments specifically on that one at all?
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Please.
The, and this probably falls into the stupid question category, but when we're talking about the three materials with one color variation, that's on the overall structure or just in the 75% part of the structure?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, that is in the 75% portion.
Okay.
The way the code is written, and the way council has discussed it as a part of those work sessions, is the 75, 25% split is to be applied per facade. So each facade should, 75% of its area should have those top seven materials, if you will. The other 25 can be the ones listed in that category.
And as in my understanding, the requiring of the three and one color variation, that's new then?
Yes.
Yeah. What was the basis for conversation as to how that came about in the council meeting?
When the City Council was discussing this at their work session in August, staff had brought forward an idea after looking at a variety of different codes, talking about it internally, at where, what ways could we implement language that would create more creativity, if you will, and not create a uniform look, but still trying to get at that classic and timeless look that the council has expressed an interest in continuing to see. As you know from their comments, some of the concern is that we want to create structures that don't date themselves easily, so that as you're driving through a community, you don't say, oh, look at that 1984 strip mall type of situation. You want something that's going to stand the test of time. So staff was proposing that language, so it was, they were reacting to it at their work session.
If we're still in the safe zone of dumb questions, can I ask about the
Please, go ahead.
The calculation of exposed slope roofs as it relates to the calculation of facade materials? Do they, do you include the surface area of a sloped roof in commercial buildings as part of the facade, or not?
Mr. Chair, as of now, staff does not include the roof in the calculation. It is from, it is from the wall to the grade. So if there is a pitched roof, or a mansard type of roof, that is not considered part of the building wall calculation.
Is that standard typically?
Yes, it is.
I might suggest that there are dominant design structures that depend upon the roof for the architectural style of the building, where the roof is an integral part of the design and becomes a key issue, if not for review, but in the architect's vision and the owner's vision of the building. So I think that there's a place for including the roof as part of the overall review, whether it's included in the calculations or not, I'm not sure. But I think that's, I'd welcome any other points of view on that.
Anybody else have a point of view on that?
I guess just in, in a quick comment, I think it might be hard to include it as part of the calculation, but I definitely agree with you that it is part of the review. I mean, as you can, as you say, it can be a very dominant aspect of, of the, the design. So, but how do you put that as, I don't know how you put that as, except as a subjective part of the review.
I think we're already on the slippery slope of subjectivity here. But that said, I think there's, you know, there's a common building type in our city, and throughout these small office buildings, let's say, that are up around town, across in the car wash on Flying Cloud Drive South, and maybe out by the lawnmower repair place on Highway 5, you know what I'm talking about, the single story, sometimes they're two-story, typically wood frame, very strong roof lines because of the depth of the building. And so if one was to look at the building in pure elevation, I bet the roof might compose of greater than 50% of the overall elevational impact. And I don't think it's ever been a problem in our city. So I don't think we want to over-regulate something that's not a problem.
Yeah.
I just want us to be aware of that, and if the roof isn't part of the topic, then I don't know if it needs to be acknowledged, or just kept off to the side as an awareness issue for staff.
Okay. Any other comments about number one?
Yeah, I got a question or a comment, maybe. Was there any discussion on 3D printed materials and its usage, and where those might lie, given the different types of materials that they're using in 3D printing technologies?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, there was not specific conversation about 3D printing technologies.
Would that be something that we might want to explore?
No knowledge.
Is that plastic?
Well, if they lie, if you think the materials would lie into one other, one of the other seven categories already, then it's a moot point, but, I don't know, just any other thoughts on that?
I would think 3D printing would be a fabrication technique, kind of like means and methods phrase that they use in the construction industry, and the material that they decide to use that, what you just pointed out, is more the, more the reviewable element of that. A lot of times, 3D printing probably came out with plastics first, because that was the easy, easy to inject on the small tube, but they're doing metals now, and all sorts of cementation materials as well, and fiberglass and things like that. So it's probably the material choice more than the technique they use to build it. I might have a topic worth discussion, and that is metal panels. This is not on the 75% list, but you'll find that on the 25% list, and it's simply called metal. And I think it's worth a discussion to distinguish between maybe two different types or styles of metal fabrication, and that is what we all typically know as sheet metal. That's the thin, relatively light gauge sheet metal that has a tendency to oil can or warp if used in wide, wide instances. Those are typically used for gutters, downspouts, trim, things like that, where the width is relatively manageable. Thinner materials used over maybe eight to 10 inches wide have a tendency to oil can, and are generally used then on building facades. Solid metal panels, either very thick, like thicker than 14 gauge, I'm thinking about like an eighth of an inch thick, are available in the marketplace. They hold their shape, profile, dimensional stability, offer a lot of different colors. We don't see a lot of those in Eden Prairie, but surrounding communities we do. And then there's a sandwich panel that's out in the marketplace, which is extremely popular. MCM is the acronym for metal composite material, and it's two sheets of aluminum bonded between some resin. It's about a quarter of an inch thin, and those two are very rigidized. Examples of that might be, if you follow the Bloomington Strip right past our city line into Bloomington off the north side of 494, there were some silver buildings built, maybe some 20 years ago, Delta Dental used to be in those. Those are metal panel buildings. On the west, Paisley Park in Chanhasan on Highway 5, those big white panels, I believe they're, they're metal panel as well. I believe that the only examples of sheet metal buildings we have here in town are, unfortunately, sheet metal buildings like Winter Park for the Vikings, of course, very prominent on our freeway, but, and then, of course, at the airport, all the airport sheds that we have. But my point is that sheet metal is probably the wrong material to use in great quantity, and I think that's already expressed in the ordinance, but solid metal panels, I'd be interested to know if, before my time, if people have presented a building with metal panels, and they've been rejected because it's not on the list, or if we ought to entertain architectural solid metal panels that have an architectural style to them? I'd be interested to hear what other people have to say about that.
I can speak to it from a staff perspective. In my time with the city, we have not received proposals that integrate solid metal panels, other than as a roofing material, of course, not as a material, exterior wall material. You know, that is not something that people have come forward and asked to incorporate into their building within that 75% category. The council did have specific discussion about, you know, that metal has come a long way, if I may paraphrase, for them, and they may be interested in seeing some buildings come forward, or proposals come forward, and they didn't want to stifle the creativity. And of course, that's when the discussion ensued about the, if a building proposal comes forward that isn't compliant with that 75, 25% split, there's always the opportunity to go through a PUD process and ask for a waiver, because there may be a very attractive building that comes in not meeting these standards, and council didn't want to shoo that proposal away, if you will, but rather entertain it. And there is a process that would allow for that.
So it sounds like the council's open to it, which is kind of what you're alluding to, correct?
I was alluding, yes, possibly being open to the discussion, but more to the point differentiating between the types of metal, instead of just using one word, metal, perhaps differentiating between sheet metal, which may be undesirable for us
Right.
versus solid metal, or MCM, use some other industry technical terms, to help direct our, our point of focus towards what we really want and don't want.
I think that sounds reasonable.
I certainly agree with that latter point on the sheet metal aspects of it. I, just to kind of stake out some ground, I tend to be a little bit of a traditionalist. So I, I personally like having some level of consistency and restriction on the seven, on the materials in the 75% category, given that the PUD process does allow for at least consideration of something different. In other words, I don't think we should be completely blocked off to it, but my personal preference is the guidance to, of, of the more traditional approach that, that's been used in Eden Prairie on the, you know, brick, stone, glass, kind of
The more organic type of
Yeah, kind of approach. But again, that's just, again, a one-person, personal opinion on that. And I'm certainly open to at least having a process where something varying from that could be considered.
Absolutely. I agree.
Yeah, I do too.
Okay. If I could ask for a clarification on the 75% between item six and seven, there's architectural precast, and then the other one is precast concrete panel, then you go on to say with exposed aggregative natural stone materials, things like that. You know, in their, in our industry, we do differentiate between architectural precast and structural precast. Structural precast being bridges or load-bearing type concrete members. They could be wall panels.
Just as a clarification, like the, the wall panels, the stand-up panels that MTS uses, that would be more in the structural
That's correct.
Category, okay.
If you go through any industrial park, and you say, see those panels, they're usually fabricated by a popular fabricator down in Savage, who does the sandwich panels, 12 inches thick, or in the northern suburbs, there's another panel manufacturer as well, sometimes flat or T, double T panels, things like that. So those are structural in nature. They can be decorative faces, but the term architectural precast maybe suggests a non-structural, but a high level of finish with greater tolerances. So this is more of a question than a, than a statement, but I think we ought to be clear in why we're differentiating those two line items. If we only want the higher tolerance, greater level of finish architectural precast for commercial, office, town center, things like that, that may be appropriate, where structural precast really has no business there. As opposed to the industrial district, where structural precast is an extremely popular and appropriate material. And, and again, we have still those two listed, eight and nine, under the industrial zoning districts. So maybe there's just some wordsmithing to help people understand the difference between architectural precast and then just precast panels.
Understood.
Okay.
So it sounds like we've gone through one, and we kind of touched on number two. Does anyone have any other questions about 0.2, which is revise the 25% language to provide for more open-ended opportunities while limiting non-preferred materials?
I'll just comment on the non-preferred materials. I think the, the comments that, that were made, Julie, and that you repeated around the plastics and, and some of the material that might be better associated, maybe the sheet metal as well, that might be better associated with trim as opposed to larger aspects of the 25% segment. I, I support that completely.
I, I share that opinion. There are two missing materials on the 25% list that are maybe purposeful. One of those are awnings on our buildings, many retail buildings especially. Awnings are a very favorable design treatment. Sometimes they have logos, maybe could be construed as signage. So I don't know if, if you have been regulating awnings, awnings as an accessory, or as signs, or should we calculate them as part of the building facade, which is my opinion, because I think they're permanent, decorative, and eye-catching. The second one that wasn't on the list was concrete blocks, decorative or otherwise. And I think that was an obvious, or a purposeful omission, but I'd like to hear if that, if that was a purposeful omission, and if everybody still agrees with that. But if we could take up maybe the fabric awning discussion, I'd like to just find out a little bit more history on that, and why we're not talking about that more.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, typically awnings have not been calculated in, in the exterior materials. That is certainly something depending on the location and the project that staff may recommend as Commissioner Farr alluded to, as a building feature that can add a lot of interest and depth and texture to a, to a project. It is not something that is required by code. It is something that, you know, you will find in the town center design guidelines, and I expect when we move forward into the architecture portion of the design standards discussion, that awnings will find its way into that conversation as well. As Commissioner Farr mentioned, awnings sometimes are used not only for building treatment, but also for signage, depending on, on the project itself. So staff is working through that, if you will, most likely through a PUD process when waivers are being requested, and we have an opportunity to work with developers to enhance the projects and the structures, but it is not something that is currently mandated by code. And the other issue that you raised was the concrete blocks. I can't speak to why that material was not specifically included on the list back in 82 or 84, when these standards were, were put in place, but it is certainly something that if the commission wishes to discuss, staff's certainly open to hearing what your thoughts are on that particular material.
Any other comments about the blocks?
I'll, I'll just suggest that possibly a concrete block, decorative in nature, is appropriate in a rear yard, maybe facing districts that are of the same use, but not visible to the public way. I think concrete blocks were very popular, of course, back when, years ago, let's just say. They have come a long way, and, and some very nice decorative faces are available, but I think that our city has shied away from using them in great proportions on buildings, and I, I still support that. But I think they're very useful under the right application. So I, I think that Julie's spot on when we ought to think about allowing, I'll say, a downgrade of materials on non-visible sides to the public way. True, there could be a change in use or something like that, but if there's a, an established district with like-kind uses across the rear property line, and you can't see that facade from the side yard, or front street, or corner yard, or anything like that, then I think we should offer some flexibility. There could be some very good reasons why someone may want to spend a little less money there and offer us a better quality facade facing the public way. And I think that's a trade-off that we'd be interested in, in looking at. That's, that's my personal opinion. And the fabric awning, I'm, I'm a fan of including that as a, in our calculations, allowing that to be part of the 25%, and just state that that's, that's part of the buildings that we just see. It's, it's typical, ordinary, and I think we ought to acknowledge that, and just say that can be part of the 25%. That's my personal opinion.
Okay. I think I'm fine with that.
On the awning portion, would you include both fixed and, or permanent and retractable in the same category, or?
I hadn't thought about that. I would say yes offhand, because I think that the calculation right now ignores the awning and calculates the material beyond on, on the fixed building wall. Under a retractable awning situation, that would be an important part of the calculation to retain, so you'd almost have to have the applicant calculate it both ways, with the awning up and with the awning down. With a fixed awning situation, I don't know how much we care whether or not the material right behind the awning is of the same design quality. Not that it can't be, shouldn't be, but not a lot of people will look up underneath of an awning. So I, I think that surface area doesn't have to be included in the calculation for a fixed awning. I don't know how many retractable awnings
Yeah, I can't think of any, can you think of any commercial buildings that have retractable awnings?
Not offhand, but with light rail coming, I just didn't know with the zero setback requirements that we've got in some of the areas on the light rail corridor, with the retractables and the non-retract, you know, people are going to try to maximize their outdoor space during the summer months, spring, summer, and fall, having a retractable awning at that point, so.
Okay.
If, if you're alluding to maybe like an outdoor patio area, almost like a tented roof, if you will, I, I would encourage staff to classify that as a roof structure, temporary roof, or something like that, as opposed to a fixed facade feature.
I'm also thinking, because the stepbacks that we kind of created on the three levels and above, I think it was, or four levels above, and the discussion on what level we could say that a step back on the architectural rendering of a, of a property would be able to be conducive for that location, but you're, for like a outdoor rooftop patio on a second story and a third story, and then having that awning coming down, that's obviously going to have an architectural elevation for somebody sitting further back away from the face of the building. So if you've got it, like maybe not right on the street side, but you've got it hanging off of the third story overlooking like a rooftop patio, or a rooftop greenery, or garden center, or something like that, dog run, I guess, you know? There was a dog running, news that was outdoors up on the upper floors about a month ago. So, you know, I, it was just a conversational topic on the, kind of stemming from your awning.
I'll weigh in a little bit on that. I, I would see, I mean, I could see your point on the permanent awning. I mean, I think that, that to me becomes a permanent part of the facade, and has a big impact on it. But a retractable awning, to me, I would think, Julie, you talked about that being regulated under an accessory, or a different, a different part of the ordinance?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, as far as I'm aware Mr. Chair members of the commission, as far as I'm aware, I'm, I'm not aware of any retractable awnings that the city currently has, and right now, the way exterior materials are calculated, awnings are not included in that.
And I guess, I, I think what I'm saying is, I think with a retractable awning, I, I would not include that in the facade calculation. I, I think, I, I think that, you know, what, what's there is there, the permanent side of it, and retractable would have, could have an impact, but I think, and I can see a permanent awning be part of the facade, but not a, a retractable awning. Again, one man's opinion.
Okay.
Thank you.
Did we answer staff's question about including the specific material of fiber cement to the 75% category, under the potential revisions part of, of Julie's summary? I don't know if that was talked about or discussed. I would support that.
No, it hasn't. It hasn't been yet.
No, no.
Okay, maybe we should just spend a moment on that. I'm a fan of that. It's a relatively, you know, new material. There's James Hardy boards, and that's an example by brand, but those have been proven in durability and constructability for mostly residential, but creeping into the commercial end, and so I, I don't have a problem.
Yeah, I agree.
I'm not as familiar with it. Do, do you think it, to me, is it, is it equivalent to, I mean, we have brick, stone, you know, things like that. I know it's not equivalent to it, but from a, a sense of quality or richness, is, do you, and I'm asking this as a valid question, do you feel it's equal to that?
No, secondary or tertiary.
It would never be at the pedestrian level, right? It would, it would have to be a pire, the Hardy board or anything like that.
It depends on the project. I mean, we're seeing it on, it's usually used as a primary building material for residential and very light commercial and retail. On a large commercial building, bank, office building, et cetera, library, you're probably not going to see that, so I would, I would be surprised, but to your point, I would be very disappointed if someone was to come in with a four-story building with 75% compliance with fiber cement. I don't think that's appropriate for that scale of development.
Okay, that, that's the point.
You're, you're spot on. I, I agree with you.
And so how do we, I mean, if we put it in the 75% category, that would be.
I, I think we should, we should limit it based upon the, the scale or use of the facility. Residential, retail, potentially, I would, I would shy away from office.
I mean, I, I'm not, I'm not completely against it. I understand your point and could see that there were places, but I'm, to equate it to the brick, glass, stone.
Yeah.
On a, on a exact basis, I didn't see, it didn't feel right for me either.
Sure. It's, you know, to be fair, I think it's creeping into the market because it's a good replacement for natural wood siding on a house, and we don't have wood.
Right.
Anywhere on this list, right? So from that standpoint, maybe it ought not be on the list, but because of its qualities, even though it was invented to replace something of a natural material on residential, now it's got application for maybe a, a higher visual impact use. So I don't, I don't want to be blind to it, like someone could come in and suggest it, and we could probably say, okay, on the right type of building at the right scale. But I, I wouldn't like to see it on the list as an equal to brick, stone, glass.
Okay.
You're, you're very right.
And that's my position as well.
I couldn't agree more. Couldn't agree more.
Would you possibly see fiber cement being behind a permanent awning, in that area that people are looking up and not necessarily, because if we added it to that, they could include that in their 75%, because it'd be behind a permanent awning, kind of putting two subjects together?
Sure. Absolutely. Absolutely. It would have great application for that, right?
But are we getting to a point where we're?
Staring at the slide.
Kind of, I mean, that makes a very complex ordinance to say.
And that's what my point is.
Yeah.
I'm much fine.
Yeah, yeah. It, it's almost like we have a, an editorial section of the zoning court. We know these materials are out there, and, you know, delicately, that would be very difficult to wordsmith, but yeah, that would be good.
Let's move on to number four. Allowing the use of two materials within the commercial districts if the two materials used are glass, brick, or stone while requiring at least one color variation.
So I'm a little confused on that, because earlier on, they were requiring the use of three materials, and this question is asking allowing the use of two additional materials. Is that what I'm meaning?
Because when the, Mr. Chair members of the commission, when the city council was having their discussion about it, they had some discussion, as I mentioned earlier, about preferred materials within that 75% category. So trying to incentivize the use of some of those preferred materials like glass, brick, and stone, because they are the more durable time, withstanding time type of products. So in the event that language was written as allowing only two materials, there wouldn't have to build in the additional expense of a third material. Might make the design a bit easier if you allow two, if you're using the preferred material. So I just wanted some feedback from the, the commission about their thoughts on that, if that is one angle to get at incentivizing some of those preferred materials, or if the commission has other thoughts as well. You know, staff is open to hearing those.
And what's, how would you incentivize that?
Mr. Chair members of the commission, I think by allowing fewer than the three materials, it might, it may make the proposals more straightforward and understandable, agreeable to the, to the developer to allow lesser numbers of materials than requiring a broader palette, if you will, in order to create that unique texture, appearance, those types of design elements.
I'm never one to lack an opinion. I like the idea. I, I like the idea of incentivizing and, and not being in the building industry. I don't know if this is the right kind of incentive, but it sounds like it's at least in the right direction. So I do like the idea of incentivizing the, the, what I would call the very traditional, you know, glass, brick, stone materials.
Other comments?
I think this kind of goes hand in glove with that, requiring three materials. So if you're going to require three materials, have two of them be of these preferred nature, but if you're not going to require three materials, this might be kind of a detriment in my mind. So it kind of goes, the one goes with the other. I got, we haven't had a discussion on the requiring three materials yet, so I don't know, maybe we can have the same discussion at, all at once.
Sure.
I think we should.
Okay.
A visitor to the Twin Cities is going to buy a postcard, and the most recognizable structures in our state are monochromatic buildings. The State Capitol, the Cathedral, Minneapolis City Hall, Foshe Tower, IDS Tower, the list goes on. So I don't think we want to purposely tell people that they have to use multiple colors in a building, unless other people feel strongly about that. I think we've had beautiful buildings in our city so far, and I, I think that's just a point of observation. Maybe a lot of those are public sector buildings, governmental buildings, of the examples that I used, but there's still a lot of contemporary buildings where one material used well can be a very successful design and timeless. So I, I, I would promote the use of texture, scale, proportion, other architectural tools in our toolbox, besides just changing color or material just for the sake of having multiple colors or materials on the project.
I would tend to agree with that, because a color that's in right now with architectural building might not be in 10 years down the road, in order, or a color scheme of differing colors like that. It might not be that timeless fact that we're looking for.
And I too would agree with that.
Okay. Any other comments before we move on?
Now, that, that said, I'd, I still would like to see, and I don't know how, what to suggest, but some incentivis, incentivizing for those, again, very kind of classic timeless materials, the preferred materials. I can't suggest how that might be, but I think the glass, brick, stone are, are pretty timeless.
That's enough direction for me.
Okay. Let's move on to number five. Inclusion of languages describing the purpose of the standards, including the intended impacts, provision of wall surface relief, pedestrian scale elements, changes in textures and patterns. This may provide additional direction and guidance when alternative designs are proposed that are not compliant with the code requirements.
I think that's a fantastic initiative. Most zoning ordinance lack that delivery of purpose, and I think anything we can do to clarify our purpose really will help an application developer and architect understand the mission of the city and what our key objectives are. And I think the things you've listed there are appropriate to talk about. Surface relief, pedestrian scale elements, besides pedestrian scale elements, just relative proportion. Big buildings need certain proportions, small buildings need certain proportions, and they vary, and I think there can just be a few sentences about that. Not all buildings in our community are pedestrian-oriented, comma, unfortunately, but that pedestrian level isn't appropriate for all buildings on all sites. But I think the inclusion of language like that commentary is rare in ordinances, and I think we would be leading the pack and be very proud of that.
Would everyone agree with that?
Yeah, makes sense to me.
Makes sense.
Very good. Moving on to number six, and the final one. Appropriate facades to apply the exterior material requirements to. Consider facades that are not visible from adjacent properties or public roadways, private roadways. I thought, you brought up a pretty good example with the light rail and stuff like that. I think that's important. But how you write that into a code, I mean, it's funny, you don't care about it until you care about it, you know? And so I, I see that one kind of being a tricky one, but what are your thoughts, commissioners, on that?
And Mr. Chair members of the commissions, I'm certainly not asking for you to draft language this evening. I'm just looking for some general direction, and then we'll go back to, back to the drawing board on that, if that's something that you're interested in seeing. We'll, we'll take pencil to paper.
Yes, go ahead.
Well, just, just to bring up something recent, when we had the discussion last week about the Eden Prairie Center, just the landscaping, it brought to mind the fact that that area has developed over a period of time, and some of the elements of that center probably are going to come along with a new look when they either are advantaged or disadvantaged by the LRT pattern of transportation that develops in the city in the future. So I think this is going to be, I think this is going to be key. I don't know what it's going to be. I don't have any idea, and not at all talented in that respect with building form and design and everything, but I just think of the many ways in which the city has changed over periods, long periods, and many of the times it changed and things didn't work out really well, but it would be great if we could figure out some language like this to give people at least a heads up. I don't know how it would work out. It may not be the best kind of provision in the, in the code. I don't know, but it's good. Even so.
I don't think it's an overwhelming task. I, I think that it could be crafted, again, rear yard, away from the public way. You, you could look at the three-dimensionality of it, so that hire multi-story buildings adjacent or, or within a certain radius, looking down on that property, you know, limit those things, and again, like uses across the yard, being consistent. I, I have a feeling that staff could probably put together four or five criteria that would nail 98% of our problems.
We'll aim for 99.
99, great.
Good for you.
Because, well, one of the things that you brought up was the use of concrete block could be in close proximity, adjacent, non-street or non-public view locations, and I was thinking alleyways at that loading dock area, alleyways. In industrial, I think you were mentioning industrial?
Absolutely. Just think of a typical industrial building along a block. The side yard neighbors could see it. There's probably wants to be windows there anyway, so you'd see the side yard elevations when you drive down the street. Front yard is obvious, but the back is probably hidden from view from the public way, and the only people that could see it are the neighbors on the opposite rear yard, and again, if they're in a like district with a single-story industrial, that's a very common setup, I think, in our city, and, and we could relax those materials back there for the benefit of, of offering up the developer more money on the, on the nice faces.
So note, correct me if I'm wrong, Julie, the, the way that these categories are calculated is it's per facade face?
Mr. Chair members of the commission, that's correct.
So then, one thought that I just off the top of my head, we could have an exclusionary language that would exempt that with a certain criteria, like you were saying, that 75 or 25% requirement from that location, there'd be kind of that give and take with staff when they're through the review process.
Right, right. The engineer in me says, I agree with it. The other side of me says, I think it'd be tough to write those exceptions, but, you know, we could certainly give it a try. I, I just.
Or city staff can give it a try.
Yeah. Because I, I'm just worried that, how do, how do you, how do you specify in an ordinance, what are the exceptions there? You know, again, I'd be willing to look at it, certainly.
You can give it a try. Keep it as somewhat general as you could without limiting, because there's always going to be some exception to the exception, too, and you're like, well, I wish we would have put that in, you know?
Right. Okay. Any other closing comments before we move on?
Was there any other, any thoughts on the private roadways locate, angle to it? Because we've got some private roadways in this city that are larger than what we most notably think is alleyways or, or close areas. I think the ADC, the old former ADC, that's a private roadway. Was there any thought to the private roadways angle that anybody had?
Well, I mean, that was one of the thoughts I had when it came to exceptions for this. So, you know, if it can be viewed from a private roadway, you know, if that were to be one of the exceptions as opposed to a public roadway, I don't, I don't like that one, because as you say, there's some private roadways that are, you know, are substantial, and I would think we would not want the city, the, the view of the city to be different. An alleyway, you know, again, this is, that's, gets my point of how do you make the exceptions?
Yeah, because you look at, you know, some of the trails, you know, jogging trails and stuff like that could be.
I remember when we had, when they redid Menards. Menards came back to us and said, well, we don't want that back fence on the backside of Menards to have to be a brick fence. And, and, you know, their logic was, nobody's going to see it, and it's cheaper. Okay? But is nobody really going to see it?
Mm-hmm.
And that one, you know, we, we deemed that they had to do it, as I remember.
And you go by there often to make sure, don't you?
I don't.
Okay.
Sorry.
Anything else? Yes, please, go ahead.
Can I bring up two more topics?
Sure.
Sorry. First is whether we want to discuss any sustainable initiatives that go hand-in-hand with just the visual part of this ordinance, and not suggesting we want to force this, but I don't know if the commission or the council's had any conversation about it. There are all sorts of sustainable initiatives going on, and the selection of building materials is affected by that. The US GBC's LEED program is one such obvious program. I'm not suggesting that we mandate LEED participation in any of our projects, but that, that kind of falls into some other global issues like carbon neutrality and selecting materials with low embodied energy. And there's a lot of bleeding-edge theory about this, and it's probably not too many years off where cities will be encouraging, if not requiring applicants, to provide low-embodied-energy materials on buildings and/or participating in sustainable initiatives on a more formal basis. Some cities, of course, already require certain levels of LEED or some other sustainable initiative process, and I don't believe our city has gone there yet. That could include strategic landscaping as well, and by strategic, I mean plantings that do provide performance-based results of shading or wind control, things like that, that could impact a facade's material and energy performance. And then lastly, the solar panels. I don't know if we've discussed solar panels, even though they're more rooftop, sometimes they can be very visual and become part of a wall if it's on that whole. they can be very visual and become part of a wall if it's on that whole sloping roof, wall discussion we started out with. So that whole topic of sustainability and how it relates to the facade may warrant a separate paragraph, and I don't know where you want to go with that.
Julie, do you have comments?
Yes, I do, please.
Okay.
Mr. Chair members of the commission, as you recall through the design standards discussion, one of the topics was sustainability, and as you're aware from the presentation that Mike Larson from the Met Council made on the 2018 Conference of Plan and System Statements, the Met Council is requiring as part of the comp plan update, a chapter that is, I believe their term is resiliency. It's a sister statement to sustainability. So the city will be having some very significant and ongoing discussions about sustainable practices through the comp planning process, which I expect will then lead to influencing changes to the code that will come out of that process as well. So that's certainly on our radar. It just wasn't included as a discussion item for this evening, but it is something that we are working towards.
Okay.
We had some pretty active discussions about three or four years ago, John, as you remember, about LEED, and had, you know, some wanting to encourage, encourage people to, you know, look at the sustainable standards and.
It was coming to us quite frequently, but I haven't seen it in.
Yeah, you're right. It kind of dropped off.
The building codes are trying to catch up with LEED so that as our new energy code was just adopted here in Minnesota a few months ago, there are stringent energy code requirements that are getting up to the minimum LEED standards anyway. That has been helping. And if I can, just bring up one more topic, Chairman.
I just want to talk about the solar panels. Did you have any comment about that, Julie, or is that?
Mr. Chair members of the commission, that's certainly something as a part of our ongoing sustainable or resiliency conversations we'll be taking a look at even further. As of right now, as Mr. Commissioner Farr commented, many of the solar panels that we see in the city are roof mounted, so they don't enter into the wall calculation issue that we're discussing this evening, but it is certainly something that is allowable by code, and, you know, staff certainly is very supportive of that when we receive inquiries.
I guess the other one besides solar panels would be like wind turbines or something like that. We had Best Buy that had one. I don't know if it still has it or not.
Wind turbines?
Yeah, they used to have two. I think maybe they only have one now, but that goes kind of the same.
Absolutely.
Same way.
Absolutely.
Okay. Commissioner Farr, you had another comment?
The topic of retail chain prototypes, I don't know if we want to address that or avoid that. There are cities who demand that retail prototypes not be the out-of-the-box stamp retail prototype, but rather get customized for application in their cities.
So can you explain that a little bit more?
Sure. Without picking on anybody in particular, take a fast food retailer like McDonald's, Burger King, Hardee's, somebody like that. They'll have their prototype A, which is this is what we put on if no other restrictions are given. Then they'll have their upgrade packages, okay? And then they'll have to go custom if they're in certain cities that maybe are more restrictive. Not saying we want to go there, but there are cities like us who do go there and say that they would like a custom-designed building using the branding elements that the retailer has. As an example, the McDonald's golden arches. We don't want to say you can't put golden arches on your building, but we may not want the.
Right.
The prototype building that is the same in every town USA. So slippery slope possibly, but as the newbie on the commission, I just wanted to know if that topic was out there and if we are purposely avoiding it or if we ought to head it on.
Comments, Julie?
Mr. Chair members of the commission, council did speak to that specific issue when the discussion was held at the work session, and council generally speaking understood the need for business identification and wanted to see that merge, if you will, with Eden Prairie's identity. So allow the opportunity for business identification and prototypes, but maybe not to the same extent that you would see it in other communities so that their architecture and that their aesthetic blends in with the community overall while still allowing them to have their message. And I think that you will see that in a variety of buildings as you take a look at the culvers that is over in Southwest Transit. That is not the same culvers you're going to see in a lot of other, other communities. The recent proposal that the commission and council reviewed of the O'Reilly's Auto Parts store that was proposed, as I recall, the applicant referred to it as an upgrade of their upgrade after working through the process. So staff is certainly cognizant of that, and we continue to try and work with folks through the PUD process especially. But what we're really trying to get at with the revised language is what if a development proposal comes in that doesn't require a PUD and there's not that conversation that gets to occur if they're just coming in and meeting the standards? How do we ensure that a project meeting the standards identified in code still meets the community's needs for aesthetics and community character? So that's what we're trying to get at with all, with all of these discussions, but I certainly appreciate the comment.
Okay.
Yeah, I remember a fairly lively discussion around what's now the Spire Credit Union. I don't believe it was Spire who was building that originally, but they came in and wanted some very characteristic elements of their own branding there, and there was an interaction here.
I don't know if I was.
There was an interaction here at the, with the planning commission on that issue. And, and the idea was exactly what Julie, exactly what Julie said. We understand the need to brand it, but it's within the constraints of how the city sees.
Well, that was, yeah, we also had that conversation. I don't know if you were here about Best Buy when they came in.
Which one?
Best Buy? Were you here involved with that one?
No.
That was a while ago. Okay.
Thank you.
If I may ask one more question that probably comes back to a couple of the earlier topics, earlier numbers, but it's just come to mind now that I think it was earlier in this year, council had a discussion about medical cannabis, and I'm not sure where that discussion, I just heard it and read it in the paper, and I'm not sure where that went, if that just kind of fell flat or if ongoing discussions. I think there was a, one medical supply company was wanting to kind of move in Eden Prairie based upon some demographic and some survey that they had done, market study. But with the other materials, I'm not sure if they were wanting to or if we want to have a greenhouse type within the industrial greenhouse type materials. A lot of the conventional greenhouse would be of glass with a lower cost. Opportunity to create a greenhouse would be a hoop structure. Now it'd be hooped metal with plastic sheeting over it. Sometimes it's double, double plastic sheeting of a thicker ply, but that is something that would be along the lines of some going green aspect, no pun intended. But I didn't know what kind of discussions on the medical cannabis, if it was just a dispensary that they were looking for in Eden Prairie, if that kind of fell flat in its face, or if that brought forward other discussions on these greenhouse type operations. And within the greenhouse type operation, within an industrial or a commercial area, that would mean that they would need to keep their economies on cost down, and some of the materials that they would want to use for that operation would not be a part of any of this.
Mr. Chair members of the commission, the medical cannabis conversation that the city council entered into earlier this year specifically was a text amendment to allow medical cannabis dispensaries. State statute is very clear as to the difference between dispensaries and manufacturing, and the state law allows for two different providers. Each one is allowed one dispensary per congressional district, and each provider is allowed, I believe it's only one manufacturing location. So for instance, the manufacturer, the manufacturer that was interested in Eden Prairie has their manufacturing site in Otsego or Rogers up in that general neck of the woods, and they were looking to just locate a dispensary within Eden Prairie for the congressional district in which Eden Prairie sits. So it was not about manufacturing whatsoever, just dispensing.
It was more a zoning question than.
It was a zoning question because the zoning chapter was silent on that specific type of use, and it is a very unique use because of its, all of the discussion items that we had back in March on, on that issue with regard to federal and state law.
Right.
Mr. Chair, sorry, go ahead.
Medical cannabis aside then, was there any other further discussion on greenhouse type operations within the city, or did that, or anything like, you know, within a commercial or an industrial, an industrialized greenhouse operation? Because right now we have a few farms and farming operations in the city that run, still run greenhouse operations in the north side and then in the south side, and there's one on the west side too that I can think of off the top of my head, but if you're industrialized greenhouse operation.
Mr. Chair members of the commission, I'm not aware of any specific conversations about industrialized greenhouses.
Then we can approach that topic when it comes in.
Any final comments before we move on?
Just to follow up, Commissioner Woodke's comments about greenhouses brings up the seasonal building types. I was thinking about flowers and greenhouses, that's why it came up. How do we react to or have policy on seasonal structures that pop up on all of our shopping center parking lots in the summertime to sell corn, flowers, et cetera? Those are usually like Quonset hut tent structures that could last seven, eight, nine months a year, and how are those regulated or as?
Or the Christmas tree ones that we're starting to see now.
There you go.
You know?
There you go. So some of them are just for a week, maybe a weekend, but some of them end up nine months a year.
Mr. Chair members of the commission, those types of items are regulated actually by two different types of regulations. The first one is seasonal sales of goods, not manufactured, but grown by local farmers. So for instance, you know, a farm produce stand is, has its own set of standards, the and regulatory authority. Then the other issue of the, I'm going to call them more of the greenhouses where you can go and buy your bedding plants and, you know, flower baskets that you see more in the April through July timeframe, that is, falls under the category of outdoor seasonal sales, and that has its own set of rules and permitting that those requests go through with the planning division.
Good, thank you.
Okay. Julie, shall we move on?
I have enough information.
There is nothing that you needed from this commission as far as that, correct?
No, sir, I did not need a formal recommendation, or I just was looking for consensus and discussion for some guidance, so thank you.
You now have it.
Yes, I do. Thank you.
So moving on to the 2016 work plan.
Mr. Chair members of the commission, as you know, last year was the first year that the planning commission has implemented a work plan. The other advisory commissions within the city have operated with work plans for quite some time because they have a bit of a different dynamic because first, they're not statutorily required. Second of all, they don't review specific land use applications that come into you. But as we worked through 2014 and looking forward to 2015, staff suggested the creation of a work plan to identify, there may be times when we don't have a lot of applications or there might be some additional time to allow for some education. So staff last year put together a work plan, and we have put together a work plan again for 2016. As you can see, it's pretty straightforward. It identifies tasks primarily by quarter because, as you know, our first and foremost obligation is to review the land use development applications that come in. However, in the event that we have a light month or meeting, there is an opportunity to bring other items forward for your review and consideration. So thinking forward to 2016, primarily what you are going to see on your work plan is continued discussion about the design standards, similar to what we had this evening as we continue to work through those issues, and then also working towards that 2018 comprehensive plan. As we get farther into 2016, I expect that staff will be putting together a specific work plan for the comprehensive plan, and we will try and bring forward issues to you on a very regular basis in order to maintain momentum and work through all the issues that we need to in order to complete that plan. So staff is just looking for you to review the plan, provide any comments that you might have, and then ultimately, hopefully, move to accept the 2016 work plan.
And there is a motion, right, on this?
Yes, please.
I remember seeing it. Where is it?
It is, you will find it on your annotated agenda. Motion is move to approve the 2016 work plan.
Got it. Thank you. I know I read it someplace. Thanks.
And I'd be happy to answer any questions that anybody has.
Has this plan changed much from 2015 to 2016 moving in? Has there been any?
Mr. Chair members of the commission, in 2015, when staff put the work plan together, we were looking more at educational opportunities. So there was, I think you would have seen a wider variety of discussion items on the 2015 work plan because the thought was potentially bringing back the 2030 comp plan to review because some of the commissioners may not have been on the commission at the time that was prepared, reviewing the investment framework document that's part of the Southwest LRT, reviewing design standards to date at that point, reviewing the housing and economic development plan. And some of those things we did have an opportunity to get to because we might have had some lighter agendas, but we didn't necessarily get to all of those. So if there are certain things that the commission wishes to have some additional education on, we can try and fit that in to the work plan. But what you see before you is really taking a look at what we will need to accomplish by the end of that comprehensive plan process.
Okay.
I guess that's a point of clarification. You're talking about the 2015 goals and work plan document, correct?
Correct.
But it's for 2016?
Yes, I'm sorry. It is.
Any comments or any changes? Everybody good with that? Okay. So I'll entertain a motion for that.
Move to approve the 2016 work plan.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Your motion passes, Julie. Do you have anything else from the planners' report?
No, sir.
Okay. Members' report for tonight. Anything on the light rail?
The community advisory committee meetings were canceled for November and December, so nothing to report.
Okay. Any other members' reports? Okay. Any continuing business? Any new business? If not, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is dismissed. Thank you.